Land, would you mind saying his prayers please?
Absolutely. Father God, Lord Jesus, and my precious friend the Spirit, we invite you here today. Please bless each and every one here. We love our little town, Lord. Please help us to use patience. Help us to use knowledge and make this town something you'll be very proud of. And be just like me, Nate.
The mall hall. Board of trustees for the town of Mall Hall will meet in regular session on Tuesday, August 13th at 7:02.
Chris?
Here.
Anya?
Here.
Michelle?
I'm here.
I'll make a motion to cuss the agenda.
I'll second it.
Chris?
I.
Anya?
Yes.
Then Michelle?
Yes.
Report from the mall hall volunteer fire department. I don't know, they've made a few runs.
Yeah, they have. But, but other than that, I don't know.
Discussion, consideration, and possible actions in regards to budget expenditures for July of 2024. Moving on to the prison bank update on ATM progress.
Uh, Gideon. Thank you for the opportunity. Good to see you and a few speakers of council and citizens. My name is Robert Banks. I'm chief operations officer at prison bank. Also have our facility security officer. Party Lovex. I don't know why I'm laughing at that. And Dana Hornbeck, who's our Guthrie run officer, so.
Market president.
Market president, sorry. I have a thousand here. So I started giving an update on what we're doing. You know, in June of '22, we had a severe thunderstorm come through, ripped the roof off of the building and left us lots of water and water damage to deal with. And unfortunately, even though we covered the roof, there was more storms that came through and pulled that temporary roof off and provided more water in there. So, you know, it's just, the building structure itself is unsafe. It's best to take the building down rather than to try to fix it up. And we, you know, have... We've been tossing around, you know, before, an idea of an ITM strategy, which is interactive teller machine. That, you know, which you have a virtual teller and you can talk to on the screen. I only, you're probably familiar with automated teller machines.
A lot of them. I have trouble hearing you say.
Are you?
Yeah, probably the fans are.
Okay. So it's very similar to automated teller machine, interactive teller machine. You can talk to a teller on the screen. So, you know, and, you know, what better place to start this type of strategy than where, you know, the bank began was in Mall Hall, Oklahoma, right? So, you know, before, we were only staffing the branch three days a week from, what, 10 to 3?
Nine, nine to three.
Nine to 3. So it was very limited on when we were open. The ITM will allow us to be open 24/7 or allow the customers, the citizens here, to use it 24/7 and non-customers as well. And, but the virtual teller will be someone at our Guthrie branch. And they'll only be available like 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So I feel like, and we feel like that's more coverage than we were providing before. So literally getting ready to go to bed, you go, oh, I forgot to make that deposit. Run up here and make the deposit. Because the ITM will accept checks, will accept cash for deposit. What we'll do first is it'll be like an ATM. You can withdraw cash in the beginning and then we'll add the deposit feature and then we'll add the interactive teller. We can talk to a virtual teller. But each, each phase takes a lot of work to get put in place.
Especially the first time you do it.
You know, yeah, and, you know, building the building, getting electric to it, getting, you know, the AC set up. And, you know, the thing we're currently waiting on is a data line from AT&amp;T. That's taking some time. So as you may know, it takes a while to get contractors and utilities to show up to get things done. So that's what we've been dealing with there. So... You know, as soon as we get the ITM up and running as an ATM, then that's when we'll schedule the demo of the building. But we wanted to leave the current ATM up and live for you to utilize in the meantime. And, you know, once the, once the building's demoed, then we'll turn that into, you know, a green belt, nice lawn. You know, I know Dana's mentioned this, so is Jill Price. But Guthrie, they missed the breakfasts that we used to do wherever we wanted. So we want to try to, you know, have more involvement once we get all this finished. Maybe have some food trucks come in for the breakfast or lunch or something like that to bring everyone together. So, you know, Mall Hall is very, you know, dear to the hearts of the staff and employees of the bank. I've only been there two and a half years and, you know, I hear a lot about Mall Hall. And we've, we've hired consultants, you know, to help us to determine, where to open branches and what, you know, how to grow the bank, you know, in the best way. And a lot of them say you need to, you need to close Mall Hall. You need to walk away from Mall Hall. More like, no, no, that's where this all started. And so it's very dear to, you know, everyone that works at Guthrie. You know, and all of them are part of your community. They come to your events and, you know, they enjoy the town of Mall Hall. So, so we're not going anywhere. We want to be here. We're, you know, looking at the best way to serve the community as part of their banking together. We do want to donate an aerial picture to you tonight. Mall Hall that we've had hanging in the building. Also, we've had the bus that Lucille Mall Hall and Branch that we, you know, we're gonna bring here to the city offices. It is very heavy, by the way.
Yeah, it is.
I was unable to believe it. So we'll figure out a way to get it here because it is very heavy.
I've grown quite closely with Lucille. I miss her very much.
So, so with that, I mean, if you have any questions, you know, I'm unable to tell you exactly when the ITM's gonna be up and running. I mean, we're hoping this month, hoping maybe September. You know, I, it's hard to say. We're still waiting on AT&amp;T to get us that data line. But if any questions anybody has, hopefully I answered any that you might have.
Definitely thank you for this token and for even thinking of staying in the town.
I think I have the most awesome employees we have.
Thank you. I think so.
Will the machine eventually be able to take change?
Checks?
Probably not change.
Change, okay. No, it's not cash.
No, but Debbie, if you let us know that you have change still picked up because we're still doing the school pickup, right? We can have that picked up from you.
Oh, okay.
And brought down again.
I can, I can. We can adjust, but just curiosity.
The machines, the through-the-wall machine that we bought and built the building around is not capable of change.
Okay, that's fine.
System, so.
Yeah, whatever needs you have, you know, reach out to us and we'll make it happen.
Okay.
So when it's up and going, it'll be fully wiped, the teller and?
It'll start as an ATM where you draw money, just like what we have. It will very quickly become a depository where it will read what bill you deposited, what check you deposited, all that. It'll confirm all that with you on the screen and then it'll post the next day or that day, depending on what time you do it. I don't know all the details on, because the third party assembles the file and then gives it to us. So I don't know what the timing is on that, but I will post that. I'll let you know what the timing is on those things and how quickly that happens. But it'll be a whole bunch easier than having to drive to go to the deposit check.
Every Sunday, I have to find somebody from the congregation that either goes south or is gonna go at some point in the week to send a church deposit because I work in stores. So I rarely get to go.
So, yeah, you'll be able to sit there and feed those checks?
Yeah. Well, in the cash, I was like, so, sorry, I'm just trying to. I've been waiting like.
I'm trying to get the deposit up as quick as possible. We're working the behind-the-scenes part of that, even though the machine's not turned on.
Michelle even said she would have demoed it once.
Oh, I did, I said. I told her, I was like, I'll teach. I use the, I use the faith-first ITM and still want her a lot. Because I don't want, I work on the west side town. I don't want to drive all the way over. So I'll just, they have a drive-through at Country Club. So I'll just go over there and use. And one evening I had an issue and the guy popped up and I'm like, yeah, I'm trying to withdraw this much money. And he's like, you have a limit. Do you want me to spit out the caption? We went through all the security stuff and I said, yeah, I'll raise that up, please. So, but it was really handy. So I'm looking forward to when it's.
So are we.
So.
I don't understand. We requested this data line from AT&amp;T on March 21st. How have we? That's all we got, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, they won't, I don't even think they'll do land ones anymore.
This is what we're up?
Yeah, but don't they, didn't they put the ones in separately or?
I have whatever at the bank. I just don't have it in the new building since we're taking down the old building. And I didn't want to lose the ATM for a period of time between unplugging it from here and plugging it in there. I argued heavily that we were gonna bring them up in parallel and then switch.
Yeah, you'd think it'd be easy, just to move the data line over, but it seems to be a big confusion for AT&amp;T, so I don't understand.
So, yeah, we're, we're, they were here this morning before I could get here. They wrote a note on the paper. I'm sure they contacted you. And fortunately, your guys were telling me that they expect the work to be done on the 23rd. Okay, great, I'll be back on the 23rd and I'll skip breakfast and be here early so that I don't miss them this time.
Well, I think the date they scheduled, that was just on the locate ticket.
Right. They said the work would be done on the 23rd.
Well, that's when they planned.
They need it done by, yeah.
But they've got a seven-day window on the locate. So go get your hopes up.
Well, I have David in the building. I can do my work from in the building like I did today. It's a, it's a struggle, man. I hate that this is a struggle.
Well, to summarize, we just want everyone to know that we're here for you. It's been a challenge to continue to provide banking services, but that was where our heart was. And so if you need anything, please let us know. If you have any questions that come up, everyone, let us know. We're always there to do our best to try to serve everybody.
If you can recommend a tree service, the service of this community, I need one.
You need to be able to tree next to the new vote.
Mates. Mates is who we used on the lagoon last year. They did, they did good work.
Thanks.
There are still work.
Okay, all right, yeah. I think we're done.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Definitely appreciate it. Moving next to C, closing papers for ACOG grant E1-2024-10.
Okay. This is the final paper I need signed to send to Maria at ACOG tomorrow along with the minutes from the meeting.
Right.
And we should be able to get our check within a month.
Has it yet there or is I?
Is this your signature?
Yeah. But has, as opposed to the Michael C.
Oh, I just put Chris. Yeah, it does, just sign, it'll be there.
Well, when I was in high school, I went by Chris because my dad's name was Micah. And then when I joined the army, they required a payroll signature of Michael C. So depends on how they got it down, how I signed it.
That's why they call it a government name.
This, this is what they are officially closing that. She was up here last week and took pictures. She filled out some form. This is hopefully missing last.
Hopefully.
Okay, now we need to vote. We need to close it out.
So I'll make a motion to finish out the ACOG process.
Yeah. Close it out. So, yeah. Anya?
Yeah, Amy?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
Anya?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yep.
Or yes? And the second.
Moving on to D, appoint vice chairman. Before we move on with this, I'd like to read a piece of paper that I've got. Town form of government, Title 11 of Oklahoma statutes, section 12-101 through 12-114. At the top, you have voters. To the left, you have volunteer, or not volunteers, trustees, I apologize. Three to five trustees. Then you have a clerk and then a treasurer. This is to inform those of you that don't know what our particular government for the town is. There are three or five trustees elected from Ward's Board at large, which we are voted from at large. The board of trustee, sorry about that. The board of trustees elects a mayor from amongst our members, appoints and disciplines employees, enacts ordinances, raises revenue, inquires into the operations of the town departments, creates and changes town departments, transparens and remissions of fines. That is what the trustees do. The mayor presides at the board meeting, makes motions and votes on all issues before the board, signs ordinances and commissions, head of government for ceremonial purposes. Town clerk in an office of the city, keeps journals and council procedures, enrolls all ordinances and resolutions passed by the council, has custody of documents, records, and archives, has custody of town seal and attest and affixes seal to documents, may be employed to perform duties not related to town clerk positions. Sorry about that. Treasurer is an officer of the city, maintains accounts and books, deposits daily funds received, may be employed to perform duties not related to town treasurer positions. These positions may be appointed by the governing body after a vote of the people. 11 OS 1991, section 16-207. And this is from the municipal league. So with that being said, the appointment of a vice chair is not authorized within the state statutes. So we will move on to appearances.
Our attorney advised us to appoint that position, so.
Where is the statute?
Maybe you should speak to him, but I'm not okay with just skipping over it when our attorney advised us to do it because it was a need.
Advised us or you all?
He advised when we were searching for signatures for our budget since you were not here to sign it. He advised us that if we appoint a vice chair, that in those situations, that person's signature can be made in place of yours so that we don't have to call people in to make sure we have enough signatures to make up for it. That is the only reason. There's no reason to not do it. It's for a need. And that was the solution that we were given by our attorney.
Okay. Anything else that are need for appearances?
Aren't you going to the old one now? I mean.
Give me state statutes. Since we like playing the state statue game.
What did it say in the OML book about officers? There are different levels of government. Did you get to one that constitutes our level by population?
This is the town form of government in Mall Hall. And that's what he read from, the town form of government.
So in other words, if you're not here, even though they're here, you're not here to run the meeting, then the meeting has to be canceled under your terms there because there's no vice chairman to run the meeting.
Yet they have in the past.
Our attorney just said having a vice chair makes it cleaner when, when the chairman, like last time, you had an emergency so you weren't able to be here. So having a vice chair just makes it cleaner for who runs the meeting when you're not here because we still have enough for the quorum if two of us are here, so the meeting still has to go on. So I asked him, I said, you know, we had our, we did our budget. We had our hearing, but the chairman had a family emergency, wasn't here. What do we do about signing the budget? Because it had to be published. And he said, well, he said, have your vice chair sign it. And I said, well, we don't have a vice chair designated, like, we don't have a designate. And he said, well, then two, then the two board members can sign it so that shows that two of you approved it. But he said, if you had a vice chair to run the meetings, it makes it cleaner because in the absence of the chairman, it's not like we're like... Because normally I just, I run the meeting, but I just do it. I mean, not that Amy can't, but if we had somebody who was the vice and the chairman wasn't here, then that person we know is gonna be the one that runs the meeting. So that was his suggestion. And considering he's been practicing municipal law for 40 years, I didn't have a reason to doubt what he was telling me.
Okay.
So that's where that came from. And, I mean, I don't think it's a terrible idea when somebody can't be here, especially when it's the chairman of board who, like you said, is supposed to run the meetings and make some motions and all of that. Well, under, based on that, if you just, just reading that, that would tell us that if you can't be here, we can't have a meeting. But we know that's wrong because we have a quorum. And as long as we have a quorum, we can have a meeting. Now, if two people are gone, we can't have a meeting, no. But, so, under, without, just taking that on its face, then we shouldn't even be having meetings when you're not here. So I think there's a little more to it and I think there's probably some exceptions. And when you're a really small town like us, we don't have a lot of choice.
Agreed.
So I don't see what the big deal is about having a vice chair. So if you're not here, we, it's clear who runs the meeting and who can sign things in your absence. Because that, when we had that budget hearing and we voted on the budget, your name was on the bottom of that paper. I wasn't gonna sign, my name was your name. So that's why I texted the attorney and said, chairman wasn't here. We need to publish this, what can we do? And he said, you know, vice chairman. I said, well, we don't have one designated. And he said, then the two board members, so it shows that two of you voted on it. I said, okay. So that's what we did.
So I did have a solution. You did have a solution to get through it. But if state statutes do not say that there is such a, such a designation as a vice chair, you can't just fabricate it. And perhaps the attorney was thinking of a different form of government since he has so much experience in so many different forms of government. This is a town form of government. Town form of government does not have a vice chair. I mean, that's state statute, you can't go against it.
Well, like I said, we can, you know, we'll ask him, see what he says, but I don't think it's a dead issue. So if we want to table it for another month, I think that's what we should do and get some clarity from him, maybe get an email or whatever. So I'm fine with that.
Fair enough. Table till next month. Thank you for your input. I was not informed of all that information.
Well, it's new.
No, it just happened.
That's why I asked.
Madam?
Chris and Anya and, to me, my thought is that this would be a reason to have five instead of three. So there would be, I don't know what that.
We are working on five voters, yes.
You haven't told me anything about it.
Well, we did that in the past.
We can't discuss that right now.
We get the problem.
So why not?
It's not only a duty.
We're in miscellaneous, we're talking about everything. What are we gonna at least find out?
That is between the three of you. I'm just taking notes.
So did we not vote on this?
No, it's never been voted on in the county. We talked, we talked about it, but we didn't vote on it. It came up in a meeting where it was not on the agenda, so no. I mean, if you, if you want something on the agenda, you need a, when Debbie texts us every week or every month and says, you have any items for the agenda, then that's when you would say, put the discretion of the five-member board on the agenda.
So put it on next month for the five-member board.
That won't change the issue of the vice chair, though.
It's a separate issue.
When Craig was, I mean, I haven't been around a lot since the change of Craig, but when he was not there, if he could not be there, he would designate one of the other councilmen, those two, to run the meetings.
They can do that, but their signature won't hold the weight that it needs to for a document.
So you get the signature, and you can get that person back in.
But in this last instance, that needed to be signed that night. It needed to be published the next day. And because we were not both still here once we got that advice, it meant waiting another day so that the second person could come back and make that signature. If we had someone designated for that signature, there would have been no question. It could have been signed at the meeting. It would have been published on schedule, no problem.
Does that come up, does that come up a lot? Do you have to have to do that day?
I don't know.
The thing is, if you need a signature right then, you need a signature again. That matter became a fun time or another time.
And it could be during the day.
That's right.
During office hours that Debbie needs something signed, and Chris is not anywhere near town. If we had somebody else here, they could sign that paper when she needed it signed. But that would give us the ability to do it legally with no question.
What would the vice chair duties be? Since it's not outlined in the state statute, what would it do to me?
Obviously, we'll have to speak to the attorney to ask for clarification, but it was on his recommendation, so it's not like something we made up.
That all being said, then I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven thirty-three.
Oh, second. Chris?
Yes.
Anya?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Anybody need to use restroom? Public Works Authority will meet in regular session on Tuesday, August thirteenth at seven thirty-five.
Chris?
Yes, here.
Anya?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
I make a motion to consent the agenda.
Second. Chris?
Yes.
Anya?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Report on water and sewer. Since I see Mr. Frank is here.
No, no news, really.
Well, that's good news, then.
Just trying to keep playing for it. Everything's working well, right now.
Good.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Not a problem.
I have a question, but after the meeting.
Okay. I don't have time for that, but.
Report from our clerk. Everybody's caught up?
Yes, got all that done.
Discussion, consideration, and possible actions in regards to budget expenditures for July of two thousand twenty-four. BNB proposed three percent increase for water and sewer rates.
And your felder says a list?
It's been what, two years?
Every year, we do this every year.
Okay.
Uh, this time. There's a three percent increase in you, it shows the the old rates, then with the new rate, with the three percent increase.
Make a motion to accept the three percent increase in water and sewer.
Second. Michelle?
Yeah. Okay, and I, I did not put effective that over there. When do you want it effective?
When did we do last year's?
Um, it's been-
He did it in July, I feel like in the past, but.
No.
Or was it-
No, it was, it was early, it was this time.
Okay.
Uh, you pass it this month. If you go September the first, that will show up on the October, when we, when I send out bills in October, it will show that September new rate.
Okay, we'll go that route.
So we're going to make it effective September the first, and it will be, it'll show up on the October bill. Okay, I see. Chris wants to accept the three percent increase?
Yes, Michelle's saying.
Effective non-one. Okay. So we have Chris?
Yes.
Anya?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Ready. BNB sanitation increased two point five two percent effective one September of this year.
Okay, at the same time, I was working on the water, I got the letter and the mail from BNB. So their increase is going up two point five two effective September first. So it'll show up on that bill that I get. So this way, we keep them together, you know?
True.
And you'll, you have a list in your folder.
Thank you for that one, or just?
Yeah, we have to, we don't know. You have to make a motion.
Right. I make a motion to accept the two point five two percent from BNB to the trash.
So. Okay. Chris?
Yes.
Anya?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Number D, or letter D. GPS coordinates for water meters, DEQ requirements.
This is got to do with the new, uh, not DEQ, it's actually the EPA with lead and copper.
Okay.
They want, what it is, they call it a lead and copper inventory, so they want us to list each house, when they were built, if they used, what type of pipe they used. And they're asking for GPS coordinates on each meter. And it's just kind of the way we're headed, I guess.
Right.
Technology and all that stuff. But basically what it is, is we've got to come up with a report by October on our system on that. So.
Fair enough.
We're going to need GPS coordinates. We might be able to get by without them, but they're going to probably ask for them next year if we don't do it this year. So I don't think it's one of the things we can just push aside.
Right. So how do you get those coordinates? You got like a-
Somebody with a GPS system would have to do it, either a surveyor or someone that has equipment that can get the coordinates.
Okay, Frank was talking to me about it. And Rick can do it. He has done it for El Reno.
Okay.
He did it in El Reno. He's did it for our house after I talked to him about it. And he has the app. So he can do it. And that's, Frank mentioned this to me, so I, I said, Frank, I think Rick can do that. So I talked to him about it, and he said yes.
It takes a while.
Yeah.
Like forty-two satellites, so the more satellites you can connect to, so it's depending on weather, depending on. So basically, I set it on a meter, and I can say the app.
I was thinking, you're on the phone, you're on the location, you can get it.
It is, it's way more accurate. I can get it within thirty feet of there. But I don't, I mean, that might be good enough.
Right now, I'd say in the twenty-five satellite. I'd have to check and make it.
Right.
Once you get these coordinates, there's a bunch of men who'll Google Maps.
Right.
They don't drop a pin right where the coordinates. So later on, if somebody says, I can't find my water meter, it gives the coordinates. Most of them are within like six feet.
Yeah.
Six feet. I mean, they're not, if you're within two or three yards, you should be able to find it.
Right.
Probably be six hundred dollars, all said and done. Pretty easy because you can send me a number to put in.
Right.
You know, I have your hand right there, and then you go back to those other members. And it's constantly changing. But at some point, when I see that, uh, you've got enough, when I see what the-
Number of satellites.
Well, if it's within five, six feet, I'm like, okay, then we'll go with this. Because it may go back the other way, it may lose its satellite.
Makes sense.
See, I'll have to do this for several years, because I'll put it in years.
Then you said, when's that report due to the EPA?
October.
In October.
Yeah.
So it sounds like the sooner we get this done, the better off we are.
Yeah, but like he said, he said it's going to be a quick deal. It's going to take time. I don't know how much time.
Enough.
Yeah, but the weather.
We're having a meeting, I can do one right out here where you look, I mean, you got to see how old and technical.
Right.
And look at it and see.
I suppose you ladies are on board that the sooner we get this done, the better off we are?
Yep.
I think if we are, the surveyor is probably going to be a lot, a lot more money.
Right. Yeah, and time is not in our favor.
Correct. And if, I mean, if you've done it for El Reno, clearly it's-
It's good enough. In this particular scenario, then I make a motion to accept Rick getting the GPS coordinates for Frank.
Oh, second. Sorry. Okay. Do you, do you want the price? Do you want the price? All right.
He's a city employee.
What?
Have him do a timesheet.
Do you want, you wanted just a, a price or a timesheet?
Okay. I need a timesheet, I probably want.
Okay. 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 Michelle second?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Start to cover up.
Fair? Fair.
Chris?
Yes.
Anya?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Yes.
Deacon?
Yeah.
Any appearances? Water shooting out of water mains?
Well, shit. Hopefully, that doesn't happen when they put the new carbon line into the bank, because they did that last time.
Yes, Mr. Hoover?
I just want to say for those of you that have not seen the new tractor backhoe system, we need to really let Debbie know how much we appreciate all the hard work she went through to get that because that piece of equipment will take care of anything that needs to be done in this town, but it'll also help his time because he won't have to load and unload his. Get back home.
Say the bundle there too.
Yeah.
That's only gets a bucket of, um-
We got the thumb on it.
We did not have the button yet.
But it's coming.
But it's coming.
But I used it today, and it's a big time saver for me.
Awesome.
Over the old tractor. And it will take care of it in life, you know? I doubt we ever wear it out here. I won't wear it out here.
At least not in our lifetimes?
Not in my lifetime. But yeah, I'm, I'm pretty lucky. We were able to get that direct, and Debbie did a lot of work on that, make it happen. We tried more than once. We tried more than once on that deal, and finally got it.
Miscellaneous. Then I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
Anya's here.
Yeah. Chris?
Yes.
Anya?
Yes.
And Michelle?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.